I was reading, I was hoping the clock would look like that.
We will call a meeting to order introductions. Does anybody have any opening comments they'd like to make? Okay, our first item of business is Shannon, we can talk about the radio.
What do you want me to do?
What was your impression of what you heard last night? Is that exactly what we're gonna do?
I was...I think that it's good to go in 14-day timeframes. I agree with that because that gives... That was what they said we needed to know when we peaked, so I think that gives us a good timeframe to gather information and know if we're prepared as a community to make the step to the next phase, so I think that that's good. I was surprised by the small amounts of people for gatherings in the second phase. That was surprising to me. I wasn't super surprised by the amounts of people that are allowed in groups for the first phase, so that didn't really surprise me that much. With that being the first thing that was let out before they did the state of order.
Did you read the definition of a mass gathering though?
Yes, but I...
Ten, ten is totally irrelevant as long as you stay six feet apart. So restaurants, churches, if they say they're staying six feet apart, yeah, they can do that.
Yes, which I have that in here.
Right. To me, that's the most significant thing you've written, is people are gonna be asking, "Can I go to a restaurant? Can I go to the convenience store?" It looks like if they stay six feet apart, there's absolutely nothing we can do about it. But I read that thing 10 times last night and talked to an assistant to the Attorney General and I talked to two or three representatives and they said that's how they would interpret it. Mike, did you read 29? Mass gatherings, you can do it if you stay six feet apart.
Even though it specifically states 10 people in their order?
It says, the very next thing after saying 10 people is as long as you stay six feet apart.
Did it make any difference whether it was inside or outside?
No, in a building it says.
No, as I mean...
I wish I could pull that up on my phone.
But the other thing that's stated along with that says that if there's going to be an area where people are not going to be able to do a six-foot distance.
I think it's 10 people.
It should be 10 people, but it says at businesses.
And the reason, the conclusion, how I draw that conclusion is the next phase is 30 people and the next phase is 90 people. So if you're saying...
That's what they can't socialize.
I mean, if you interpret it that way, then why is the next phase 30 and why is the next phase...
That's kind of how I feel about it. I don't feel like we should turn people loose to be like, "Oh, well, if you wanna have a gathering and you can stay six feet apart, that's fine." Because it's got 10 clearly written and 30 clearly written.
And I just want to interject too. I, and I hate to say this, it is my understanding, irregardless of what you gentlemen decide, she is the last authority. I mean, you're the one that's gonna make the decision. You can write up whatever you guys want to write up, but at the end of the day, you as the head public health official make the call.
Mass gatherings of more than 10 individuals are prohibited. Then it says, "Mass gatherings are defined as instances in which individuals are in one location and are unable to maintain a six-foot distance between individuals." And in parentheses, "not including individuals who reside together, with only infrequent and incidental moments of closer proximity." I mean, that's clear as bell. If you can stay six feet apart, you can have as many as you want.
But it clearly says 10 people though.
Yeah, but it says mass gatherings are more than 10 individuals and then defines mass gathering.
In one location.
But you can't stay six foot apart.
Right. Mass gatherings are defined as instances in which individuals are in one location and are unable to maintain a six-foot distance between individuals.
Do we have a six-person limit on whites?
What?
Do we have a, in white's view, do they show the... Because I support footage on that. Same way at Walmart.
Same way at Walmart.
It's whatever the building.
Because it's not a gathering, that's not a gathering.
She decided building size made no difference. Makes no difference at all.
I understand what you're saying, Todd, but it's, they don't consider that a gathering that's doing essential tasks.
I think, after reading through it, I think her orders on restaurants, churches.
I don't think you can go by capacity for restaurants because they have to be six foot apart. So you can't do capacity on that because they have to grow off tables to keep them six foot apart.
That takes care of it.
Yeah.
You don't need to worry about how many communities you have in your church or how many...
Everybody just has to be.
What size your building is, you just have to be six feet apart. So I think mass gatherings are, that's defined as all you can do it, I think.
Well, I think they had to put a definition for mass gathering in there because people would be questioning it if they didn't have.
And to me, the 10 is, right now, I think it'd be legal to have a mass gathering of 10 people even if they came in here and sat together.
Yes, that's what it's saying.
And then...
So like in a restaurant, 10 people can be sat at a table together, but they'd have to have the next group six foot apart, is what it's saying. So like if there's a family group that comes in that's 10 people, they can sit together for 10 people at a table, is what that's meaning to me. Because whenever she's got 10 people clearly defined in there, she has to still give the mass gathering definition because they've done that the whole time.
Well, where do you think she came up with 30 or 90?
She said that she talked to groups of people and part of that was health officials, so... But I mean, you have to go by small numbers, especially for small counties, because if we have a surge and it's 50 people, that's gonna wipe us out. Because that's all that we can handle.
I saw this turned out that she comes up with numbers 30 for two weeks and 90, I mean... I don't know how, no explanation as to how she came up with those numbers. I can maybe see the 10 on the first one, but... I also had no problem with it except for the hair she wants. I think that's just right out of wrong myself, but I'll leave.
Well, it falls the same category as a tattoo bar.
Yeah, well, I don't think there should be any tattoo. I'd shut them down.
You're still, you know...
I just don't know how easy it would be for a stylist to cut somebody's hair with a mask on their face because that's whipped around their ears or tied around their head. How are you gonna cut their hair with that like that?
Temporarily, they're gonna have to take it off.
Exactly, and they are standing less than six inches away from them a lot of the time, so that's...
How many times do your barber get right in your face?
I mean, if you're sitting there though and you cough when you take your mask off for them to cut your hair, that puts them at risk.
If they cough, I'd probably clean it up right away.
It's hanging in the air and you're breathing it. That's the...
See, they were saying that large droppings, well, now they're talking, they're finding this.
You know, I, you know, I don't think it's fine in there. It's gonna eventually hit somewhere.
Eventually, yes, but while you take that breath right after they cough, you breathe it in when they cough.
I would never look at it face to face, but that'd be, I guarantee I would look at it face to face.
I had my hair cut and I get layers and they cut in front of my head, so...
Can't get layers this time.
No, I haven't gotten my hair cut for months and that's fine with me.
So when they cough, the air droppings stay in there?
They hang in the air for a little bit before they land, yes.
So when you're in white's...
Everybody should be wearing a mask while they're in a public place though, is what's supposed to be happening right now.
Which we haven't been doing?
That's what I have put out there for people to be doing. I've put it on Facebook that is recommended to wear cloth face coverings when you go into a public place.
Because I thought we talked about this two weeks ago and we decided masks wasn't any good. But I mean, is this just something that they've recommended right now?
I don't think masks protect you from other people.
People from you, that's what it is.
Yeah, that's what we discussed a couple of weeks ago and I understand that masks was a big deal, but I didn't see anybody wearing masks.
Again, it's a recommendation. I can't make...
I've seen everywhere.
Well, that's what she said yesterday was, if you do go out.
Hutch, Walmart, everything. Dylan.
Yes.
Walmart, Walmart makes their employees wonder.
It's gonna be interesting in what's...
Dylan's checkers, they have a mask, then they have a face shield, then they have a piece of...
And men's, the same, and he's talked to a lot of physicians, said that their stay at home should be longer. Because we're in a large population.
We don't have a large population here, so I don't think it's a problem to open and do the 10-person gatherings like she stated.
Right. I think coronavirus has to be pretty smart if it can pick out hair salons and not grocery stores myself.
I didn't think it would.
I think...
But we need to decide what we're gonna do. That's what we need to decide.
Well, we can't do less.
So for the page that I brought that's specific to restaurants, I did add a few things like they need to disinfect the credit card, debit card machine and cash register between every customer transaction because you're touching money or you're touching their debit card if it's not one that you swipe. So that needs to happen between every single customer, whether they're using a spray and letting it dry or wiping it down, that needs to happen. Just like their own computer use because that's being touched by multiple people.
Is that gonna go into effect for the gas stations and...
It needs, yes. They should have already been doing that. I also put that to maintain that six-foot distance if they have a bar area that patrons shouldn't be seated there at this time, they should be seated at a table. Because there's not enough space between the person working at the bar and the person sitting at the bar, so that would have to happen for right now too.
I don't want to misdirect this, but kind of under that, strip shops, um, moods.
Those are not supposed to be open either. She's got that listed under phase two, so if that's under phase two, then it can't happen with phase one either. It is...
So it'd be 14 days from today.
Well, it says, under phase two concessions and must not include self-service and food for beverages. So that's under phase two, so it'd be before, it'd be phase three at least before that can happen. But...
They can open when the swimming pool's open.
Yeah, that was my question. As I read phase two, swimming pools can open after negative.
As long as you don't have to extend the wrap line for...
So it's phase two, the scene is... Part under the... It's amazing how you, you know, I made teeth if you're on your job there and I made my teeth, you'll be fine.
Well, it all depends on how many positive cases we have too.
Yeah. As long as we maintain where we are, we can go straight into phase two and it'll be fine. But if we have a spike in having to test people and have positives, then it might be best to stay in phase one for a little while and make sure everything maintains.
Yeah, I'm just worried that we're gonna keep saying, worrying about the spike because I mean, where they don't give the numbers as far as people that have got over the coronavirus, like one case we had in Stafford County, you know, it just keeps growing, growing, growing because they never say how many.
Well, each county should know how many people have recovered and now that it's back to us governing it, that shouldn't be a problem for people to figure out now because the person that's helping do the testing should know, like, because you have to contact the person that's positive.
Yeah, we just stop posting those numbers as to the number of people recovered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it makes it look like the number is climbing. They could be on the decline, but we don't know because they don't have the numbers out. I mean, our case, it got over, what, three weeks ago? But when you hear it on the radio, they still say Stafford County still has a coronavirus case, so...
How, you said that we're back to governing ourselves. How do you get that?
Well, we are, because that's what she says in here, that it's back to us if it's not in her guidelines, but we...
To be more restrictive, not to be less restrictive. We have no control over that. She's very separate.
I'm just saying, we know how many were tested, we know how many are positive, we know where we're at on that before we go to the next phase. That's what I'm meaning.
Yeah, okay.
Like, we know if we can skip to the next phase or if we need to hang back, is what I'm saying.
Right. She talked over and over again about turning it over to cities and counties. That's not what happened. We can only be more restrictive. We can't be less restrictive.
Correct.
Not forever. She's got it to phase four and then it's trying to lose.
Yeah, we'll see.
But in two weeks, if she wants to continue phase one, she can, right? Because it says written law. If she says...
Yeah, she said last time she could change it one time.
Yes, but if it's maintaining and declining on a statewide level, then she would probably have us go to the next phase. And if we are having a spike in our own county, we can decide to stay back and have higher restrictions than phase two.
So the only, the only decision, or the only, the only thing that we have to say so is to say that we are increasing restrictions?
Yes.
Another thing, the legislature gave her until May 1st to do the orders tomorrow. We'll pass May 1st right now, but it'll be in court.
For a while.
Yeah, until it's all over with in Friday night court, but it's a mess here.
Whether the order was put in effect last month.
It's not just Kansas.
The legislature gave her authority to set the orders till May 1st and we're, we'll pass May 1st, but...
No, the order went into effect yesterday in Fort Worth. If you look at the bottom of it, it says April 30th, 2020.
Well planned, wasn't it? Very well planned.
All that stuff is dated.
What's that?
The press release.
Well, I saw she got the Secretary of State's assignment too.
Because that's a flagging extension on our people.
In my opinion, it should be...
What's the press release?
This one about quarantining if you go to these other counties because if we're having a hogwits interview, that's a big thing for our people.
I think we ought to quarantine if they go to those kinds. That's all I thought it says to me.
So if you have, okay, what if you have people coming from Fort County into here?
So they don't stop there and just drive.
No, they're coming to visit people.
Shouldn't do it.
Well, they shouldn't do a lot of things, but...
Quarantine them.
So you're gonna quarantine the family that got visited?
They should be, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't think that's really spelled out in there. I mean, I'm just saying, looking it out for a minute.
Yeah, I can edit that.
Would that be quarantined and tested?
No, unless you're symptomatic, you don't get tested. So if you quarantine and in that 14 days, whenever I'm contacting you, you get symptomatic, then you would get tested.
And when you say symptomatic, you mean come down with the...
With any of, any two symptoms that are listed.
So if I come down with the symptoms of the coronavirus and I'm worried that I have it, I contact my doctor and then my doctor says, "Get tested," so then I probably get tested at Great Bend?
If that's where they send your order to or you can request for it to be sent to Stafford?
So there are other places. I mean, it's not just the health department, but it's the only one that has testing.
Like, we had had a lot of people go to see their provider in Pratt and their provider tests then.
Yeah, well...
They're not doing the testing at the health department.
You said that we only had 30 tests?
And Phil got 30 more test kits and took them to the hospital because they are doing the testing.
At Stafford. But if you doctor at Great Bend...
How many of you?
No, how many did he have?
They have test kits there and if they wanna test you, they'll go there and they'll notify us. And that's been happening.
So if Stafford County runs out to 30 tests, people that doctor out of Stafford, something that the rest don't have. There's still one, go to the...
Yes, but Phil can also request more test kits.
That's a two thing.
Very urgent to management and like whenever he did that the last time, we had the test kits within two days.
Yeah, I mean, after last Wednesday, I thought we had 30 test kits and that was it.
Well, that's all we had until I knew that he got approved to get them. So that's what I was saying, like, we only had 23 test kits. It's like, we, if we're gonna just open things back up, which we're not now, but we need to make sure we have the supplies on hand to be able to test people if they need it. But he was able to get 30 more kits, so we've got plenty for right now.
In the hospital, say they had like 23 when we had our health board meeting. She said 23.
23, they had 23 test kits and he ordered 30. And I have four at the health department, case the nursing homes are being tested, so I don't have to come over and do it and they have the rest.
And I think they might have tested all of them. Where did they, 19?
I don't know.
Well, that was...
They had four of the state kits and they had 19 of the nation kits from the other...
Yeah, that's very good. But if Stafford County runs out of test kits...
We can order more.
And you don't have the week to wait for it, if you guys order, if you doctor in Pratt or Hutch or Great Bend, you go to your doctor and if he thinks you need tested. So if we run out in Stafford County, it's not just saying nobody can be tested.
No.
You can still have...
You can still go to your position and get tested.
And you can, you can, can you order them here the next day?
We got it two days later.
Two days later, you can get more, so...
Yeah, I told him when they got to 15 test kits.
I thought I saw Hutchinson now has like a drive-through testing. Is that for anybody that wants to get tested?
You have to be symptomatic. You can't just go in and get tested. And they're making it by appointment too.
But you don't have to have a doctor's order for it?
If they're doing it through the health department, you don't have to have a doctor's order for that, but you still have to meet the criteria or...
That's where you go, Kenny, you're talking about.
Yeah.
They're doing it at the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, all that's good, so...
The highway patrol, they're, they're the...
Fort County, slow down.
No, they'll probably pass Johnson County.
They were within two.
They were within two, yeah, they were within two yesterday.
This is no joke and I probably shouldn't say this, but one of the employees that tests the property got a letter from their employer saying that they should not, they would give them an increase in pay if they did not get tested. Now, how do you control it when you have idiots like that?
A lot of them are just...
Shannon, are you gonna contact these restaurant people and tell them, send them your guidelines?
So I have to keep that from...
Hit the word out against this line.
At least there's only been four hospitals, I saw about six hundred.
We need to vote to approve the guidelines for the restaurants and bike shift over.
I don't know. I don't think we need to.
Well, I mean, her guidelines, like Mike said earlier, she's the...
Ultimate.
Ultimate, good work, so I don't think...
Do you think there's any consensus that...
I don't think...
Do you think they're more restrictive or less restrictive than what the governor put out there?
I think they're all her guidelines and they're very specific so that they can run their business safely and keep everybody that comes in and keeps their...
We won't get in trouble for passing our own guidelines up.
I don't think so. I mean, I stopped there last night for two and a half hours reading this.
When do these guidelines start?
Well, I guess, from my...
The board chair, so these go into effect before.
If, if her guidelines are following the governor's guidelines, executive order, for county liability purposes, I don't see an issue. I don't think we're gonna get sued for doing what the guidelines of the governor is...
It says on the summary, restaurants open 10 per table, tables six foot apart, so she pretty well followed what the reopening plan was.
This isn't her guideline.
No, this is taken from the government. So they're saying restaurants can be opened 10 per table, tables six foot apart, so up right at the top, right under gatherings. See it?
Is that going on there?
Okay, yeah.
You see it? So, I mean, I think it's...
Churches should be the same order as restaurants.
My question is, how are we gonna get this to the restaurants so they know?
I'm sure the restaurant association, oh, you mean our order?
Yeah.
We only got 12 and I was stopped by one of these moms on the way, mom's bar and grill.
So you're gonna take care of moms?
I'll take care of moms.
I can take this and go in.
Can you take one to Elrose too?
Yeah, so I need two.
Can you take care of him?
What about Paul's grocery store? They have a deli with...
I have another one with me, but I can have more.
Yeah, but they're not...
No, they've had people sitting and eating this whole time.
Can it ask?
It's not surprising.
Shortstop?
I'm heading private room.
Shortstop, sorry. Clay said he would be setting.
Ever.
Oh, we're not.
Because you had the pizza toaster.
So that leaves the one on...
It's not a big one, you make it four minutes.
The max bill one.
I'll take care of this.
Sherry's a little... Sherry's a little...
I was telling Dale Goddard.
You got, and this and there is, I'll take care of this.
Okay, I can take the one over here. So is that everybody?
Is it your consensus? We should treat churches like we do restaurants.
The record isn't open.
I wouldn't think so.
No, but someone could just buy it and they're...
Six foot apart.
That's what I heard, that's what I...
She's, well, she's hot about to address that. Have her get her hands slapped, so I, but I would think it makes sense to treat it like you would a restaurant.
You know, family groups can sit together, but I mean...
I don't count.
Yeah, I don't quite understand that because where it says 10, 10 per table, it doesn't say a family group of 10.
No, it just says that they reside together.
Oh, and you, well, that's for right now, it won't have to be later.
In the executive order, if they reside together.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Because read this, this is like a little...
So Clay, can you take one to Ann Pride also?
Mm-hmm. I need four.
You'll need four, okay.
We want, but they, I'm dedicated to my faith, yeah.
He's already been just doing like orders and carrying them out curbside, so...
I can get one of these to him.
So on May 19th, when basically here, will the restriction, will then, you'll still have the six-foot social distance?
The number just increases to 30. But I mean, restaurants will still be doing the same thing with the six feet apart since there's that six-foot social distancing happening. So nothing will really change for them in that one, but it allows other things to open.
Is anybody in that office? Marshall?
I think we shut, it was dark.
Nobody's in the extension office?
The secretary usually...
Is she in there?
Is drive cleaners considered a subject?
15 of them.
They are.
It's a laundry service, so yes.
Really? Laundry manager.
I saw that last week and they're still there.
Holy cow. Well, you open up the laundry, some of the drive cleaners. No, wait a minute, you're screaming. Jacket.
So we don't, I mean, these are all fine and these guidelines go into effect before, where they will be able to come in and sit down?
Yes. And then the quarantine, I'll make that edit that Phil said, if you have somebody visit from those counties too, that you quarantine.
Unless you really want to, I'd be fine with just going with this because where Phil says the family should, then we can type that up and then somebody else come up with something different. At some point, you need to say this is good enough. I'd say this is good enough.
Okay, so I can put this out.
I mean, if you wanna have the families quarantined, I mean, how can you really enforce that?
There's nothing to enforce.
So do I need to make a motion that we do...
Not if the press release comes from her. I mean...
It's just, we're just getting consensus.
You guys are just...
This is fine, I mean, this press release, the way it is.
Okay, I do have church services and stuff listed in page one, so it'd be okay to open too, so, I mean, that's covered underneath that. It isn't giving specific guidelines because it wasn't him to order, but it's listed there.
Is that on page two?
It's on the first page, and her main changes from three years ago.
Pretty fortunate, yeah.
Who approved her guidelines then? You don't think we oughta have a motion to approve her?
Well, Mike said she, she is the end-all-be-all of this, these are her guidelines, you can't, you could suggest that she change them, but she doesn't have to. So if she's.
You can do it your own, but ultimately she's.
Her supersede.
Wouldn't we let her just approve her?
We don't need to, she's the final say.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you like to just approve your?
I mean, I think, I think you guys can weigh in on it and say, hey, yeah, this is good, or.
I, I think it would be nice.
To all be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then if we. The county commissioners.
Brian, agree.
Or maybe. Well, you don't always agree, I mean, we, that's why we vote.
Who are you, moms?
Um, but it would be nice that she, she had some backing. You guys.
I mean, we are the local board of health, she and we.
I heard you. Right, and you can fire her today if you want to.
No way. No way. I got a roadrunner, you can't do it anymore.
Good luck finding a replacement today.
Okay, you're going to.
I'm just making a, making a motion that we, uh.
Sweets, if you have.
Approve the county health department's guidelines.
I make a motion that we approve the county health department's guidelines, Shannon, some of them.
Second, we have a motion as second to approve the county health guidelines as set up by our health director, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, dear.
Do you want me to post them?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Or do you want me to just post, like, page one and page two, or just all?
Post the whole document on a website and on Facebook.
Yep. With, with a, and saying, unless there's.
The subjects to change.
Yeah. Here doesn't write, but don't write it down.
Yeah. That's kind of how it's been the whole time. And I, I mean, for when the salons and barber shops do open, I do have guidance for that also, so.
And that's May eighteenth? You don't wanna post that now, saying when it's gonna open in May eighteenth?
I would love to, but.
But you said they were hoping that they'd think, and they didn't, so.
Yes, exactly, that's why I like that.
They got a order shot. I mean, they need some kind of.
Well, they can think about it.
Well, a lot of people could still support their local hair stylists, if they purchased salon products, they can be purchasing through them and they can do curbside. And that still gives them a profit.
Can they do haircuts in their house?
They shouldn't.
I think that's against the board, isn't it, the psychology board doesn't allow that.
Is that against the board?
Uh, it's against the psychology board, so, I don't know, I can never do it.
I'm gonna say, you know, you're right, bro.
Can you send me that plan electronically? And then.
There's a lot of underground hair salons right now.
You might add somewhere on there, subject to chance.
Which we, that's a lot more dangerous than there is.
And I'll put it on Facebook and.
I'll say the same.
And I'll put that, if it's released, I'll send it to newspapers and I'll put it on Facebook.
It was a deal of that a few years ago. And, you know, a lady has her own hair salon in her house, she has one, and she's in a, or mechanic shop, you know, to take it over, and my neighbor, you know, they were gonna, the city was, and Hudson's really gonna crack down on that, you can't do it in your own house.
But can they come to your house?
Right, right.
I think they can.
But you talk about underground, like, hair salons and stuff.
That's, that's where they're gonna run into trouble.
Do we wanna publish this in the newspapers somehow? I don't know how.
You'd be half a week behind your father.
Well, I know, by the time it come out, it's two weeks to be over.
I'd post it on the county website and call it good, I mean, if people are interested, they can look it up now, Facebook.
Yeah, social media is your ticket.
Okay. Well, I think social media.
Cause it could change as soon as we get published.
Well, that's true, okay.
We had more positive cases yesterday than we had in Kansas.
Five hundred.
And that's just because they're more testing.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's gonna happen, cause they are gonna run out of testing, so.
There's a lot of testing out in garden and Dodge and sewer.
Oh, yeah.
The sewer blew up pretty bad.
Yeah. Thanks, Shannon.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, now the courthouse, uh. One moment. We kinda need to know, can we stay what we're doing now, till the eighteenth?
Yes.
And then after the eighteenth, you're gonna do appointments?
Well, that would be up to her office on the, you two on the appointment thing.
What?
For, to let people in your offices, would you wanna go to appointments, or after the eighteenth, do you feel comfortable letting people in? Does it affect my office?
I think after the eighteenth, I mean, I was only gonna let one in the vault at a time, for sure, and then usually I have, like, walk-in people at the counter, just bringing in D or whatever, or something. Um, and, so, yeah, I think that would be fine, I don't even, I don't know that I could do appointments, I think I would just do the one at a time, as long as they don't pile up out in the hallway.
The only one at a time just concerns me, if you're allowing two people in your office at fifteen show up, you got thirteen people standing in the hallway visiting.
That's the problem.
And if you go to appointment, and they know at one o'clock I can go in there, then the guy that's at two isn't gonna be standing up there.
So I started doing, you know, when we started the whole passports over, I made it appointment only, nobody called for an appointment, they just show up. So I feel like this is gonna be the same way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I still, I'll, I'll tell them, you need to make an appointment, um, when they do that, the passports now, that's what I, of course, I'm not doing right now, but, you know, I feel like they aren't gonna make an appointment to come and.
I guess, yeah, when the guy with the appointment at one, and you have ten people show up at one, and again, he gets to come in, they don't, maybe they'll make appointments. But like your drivers, people that have driver's licenses, I mean, do you wanna do the two-person appointment, or?
That's what we're trying to do.
No, I'm afraid.
Yeah, the people in the hallway is.
Now, do you want staff to come back full-time?
I think that's what I talked about.
Everybody is with the appraiser's office, they're still staggered.
Are they busy?
I don't know.
I think they oughta be there, starting.
I think they might.
Okay.
Do you think, Luanne, that by, I mean, how, we have no idea when we'd actually open it up to the public, it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse when that day does come that we open it up?
What do you mean, the?
As far as people standing around, I don't think it'd get in.
Um, mine, mine come and go, I have no, I'm a reason for my research, it's got, you know, coming in, I don't have a busy time or anything, um.
You don't think there's a lot of them waiting for you to open up?
No, cause we're doing it for them right now, and they're loving it, and.
I mean, there's never been a pile up at the front door waiting to get in normally.
I, I don't think, I mean, I basically have.
Two or three people at the most, and just normally for the tag office, and that's it.
I have three title companies.
That'd be nice, that'd be nice.
I have three title companies and maybe about four lease hounds and maybe a couple attorneys that are kind of regular, you know, not, not even once a week, but, but, you know, we see them quite a bit, so I don't think it'll be a problem.
Okay.
Now, Mary's customers.
Mary's, Mary's a problem, obviously.
Are they gonna pile up and wanna come in?
Probably.
So, are, do you think, just let somebody in, let them pile up in the hall, or do appointments, or what are you thinking?
We don't wanna pile up in the hall because they'll drift into my office, so.
Yes, right now.
They go, there's no way to watch them, if you let them inside, there's no way to keep track of them.
Well, after the eighteenth, I would recommend she go to appointments, or if you wanna do appointments now, I guess, but she's having some guards made, some waitstaff on them.
Petitioners.
Petitioners, and I'm getting some masks, uh, my sister-in-law makes them for hospitals in Dallas, so she's gonna send some up here. I mean, we're gonna take safeguards, but we just don't want throngs standing in the hallway, basically.
Would you like to do appointments now?
Hold on. I think it's up to you.
No, not really, not till after the eleventh, when taxes is over. You know, cause, I mean, we still get, like, our commercial is supposed to be appointment only, and they know that, and they show up, and, oh, I didn't know that. So then what do you do, well, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, why would you pay your taxes this year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, um. One of them suggested maybe making a ballot box, you just set it right inside the door, the front door, and it's in there. Yeah, but what if that ballot box walks off? I just, you know, I, I thought about pricing it, have a secured box set outside, you know, bolted down and stuff, for year-round stuff, but. I don't know if people would use it, I don't, a lot of counties have done that, and people are obviously using it now, but, I mean.
So why, why don't they use the mail?
I think they are.
Yeah, we have a lot of.
But a lot of people don't wanna drop that check in the mail, they wanna bring it to the courthouse, correct?
You're so safe, please.
I mean, yeah, they want to, they want to see a face or put it in their hands, they don't, they wanna know that it got them, yeah.
Longer than it used to. I can't drive over here for fifty cents.
So.
On my property taxes, where I have so many of these deals, I worry about it, I know nothing to do it wrong, get it wrong, man.
I, I call it, I always just go with, oh, yeah.
So, do you want me to look into a secure box outside?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, I did that, and I, I wanna say, I paid it in Hutch, they, I, I wrote the check for what, I added it up, and I was right, and then she said, oh, well, there's a five-dollar fee for doing it in person or something, so, I had to dig in my pocket, give a five-dollar bill, I mean.
Convenience, dude.
So.
That's the first time I've ever done it, like, not being in there.
Yeah.
So we'll just leave the courthouse like it is for now, go back full staff, and then kinda revisit it, as we see, if that's okay.
And if you wanna do appointments after May eighteenth, that's fine, because I think you're gonna have a mess, and that's, people wanting to come in there, two years.
Well, we also kinda thought about, you know, if we had somebody to police the door downstairs.
We don't have staff for that.
But we don't have enough staff to do that, to let, you know, say.
Unless Rob wants to sit down.
Somebody in the office is checking.
Well, I don't know, if you looked at my thing I wrote down.
No, I didn't.
Um, but, like, I'm gonna close, like, once we do open us, I'm gonna close to the public at four, to, to one, keep the researcher overflow, like, someone comes in right at four, you know, and then someone comes in at four-thirty. So I'm gonna put a cutoff at four, and then also that gives us time to wipe down the computers and the copy machine and the counters and everything, to, you know, so they may wanna do something like that too, I don't know. And it wouldn't hurt actually for us to wipe down the whole building every day at four.
Yeah. And Teresa will come back, I'm gonna have her come back Monday, I think, she has just been coming in later on, but I think we'll just have her come during the day.
One of the suggestions, even in places that haven't been used, is deep cleaning.
Yeah, I'm gonna have her come over here and, and, yeah.
Now, to me, if nobody's leaving their bu- building for a month, now, there's gonna be dust, but there's not gonna be people that are sitting there, if nobody's been in, how, how can it get in there?
Right.
Another one that I don't understand, but. Just.
Okay, um.
Kurt, think of it as like canvass. Whatever. I need to, I need to put thinking commonsensually, so.
It's a lot of the worst cases, are they?
Yeah. Air inside.
Someone might walk up to the door.
Did it go inside in the air conditioner?
Yeah.
Well, if you recall, I, I, Legionnaires' disease, kinda head the third ships.
Kinda get your ducks in a row with the appointment thing.
It got in there.
Yeah, it did, well, some of these third ships.
I could see that, there's some people, there's some people in there.
I know.
Churches, that's the recommendation, churches, deep cleaning.
And like I said, even if they have, if you say it.
There's nobody, no, now, it's gonna be dust, I know it.
The passport thing is gonna be crazy.
What is deep cleaning?
We have three people, that's that.
They say really, it lives on paper.
Passports.
For three hours?
And the week before, I had one report with four, family of course, wanted passport.
Depends on whether it's.
Not at this point, but, no, I don't know about crap, I don't know if they just spent it in a lot. They have the right to, and I bet they did.
They published it.
Okay, Mary, you wanna?
I'm gonna do the floors, the walls, and then, you talk about our economy's going broke, when you have deep cleaning costs and you have no people living there.
Okay, land bank.
Land bank.
Marshall? I, I would try to start and stop at the same point, but, in answer to the, the question is, can the county commission, do you have a legal way to answer, I believe, yes? And my analogy, I guess, is, and maybe I'm way off here, but I got a whole truck out in the back, and it hasn't ran in a couple years, and Todd says, hey, I, you know, well, put a battery in it, air up the tires, it might fire up, and you can take it, just come get it, just get it off my property. And then Todd goes to part, part it out, and get rid of it, sell it, and the bank shows up and says, oh, by the way, there's a two-thousand-dollar lien on that truck, where's our truck at? Uh, that's, and then, for Todd to go to the bank and say, well, I, I took it as a donation, can you just write that lien off? I don't think the bank is probably going to, to go along with that idea, they're gonna say, we loaned money on it, we, it's owed, we want our money. So, I guess my, and that's a proper analogy, but, uh, my concern is, you're starting down a rather slippery slope. You're gonna have people coming wanting you to write off for this, for that, uh, you, you can do it. Again, start and stop, but, you know, Mary spoke the other day about, you know, the, the people that it affects, um, so, again, I'm back to start and stop, you can if you want.
What's?
And I'm not gonna give you advice and say, yeah, you should do it, or no, you shouldn't, that's your.
What do you think of ten statutes, except, uh, the marshal gave?
And I looked at chapter twelve and chapter seventy-eight, I, I, you know, looked through some stuff and talked to a few folks, and, and, yeah, I, I think you have that legal authority, you can do that.
Not that we must do it.
No, the word is, they, yeah, when you read statutes, there's, you see the word may, and you see the word shall, and everything I've came up with is you may, you, you have that authority, you can, but you don't have to.
So if this person would have let this property go to the tax sale, uh, the people that you've read the list off, that's gonna be affected, would have been affected the same as if we, right? So it's one way, the other, they weren't gonna get their money out of this deal.
Yeah. But I, I will, I will, and I, I'm just, you, the land bank and the, and the city has their own attorneys, and you guys can take his advice, or not, that's your choice, but, I'm just telling you, in the future, your best bet, it's better off to let it go to tax sale, the county can buy it, and then.
You know, I need to set a precedence on, you know, writing off property taxes, but you feel like the land bank isn't just an individual coming in, there's a difference between them, and then, but coming and saying, we write off mine, or, you know, the land bank, I feel, is different, so if we did do this, hopefully that they wouldn't, I don't know.
I'll, I'll just tell you guys, I talked to the city of Hudge yesterday, um, they have an ordinance drawn up the same way we do, they've accepted delinquent properties the same as we just did, put back taxes, and Rio County's wrote the taxes off. Our Kansas City, I contacted them, they have the same type of ordinance, I mean, they're all funded by the city, they've all done the same thing we've been doing, they've accepted properties that are delinquent on taxes, and the county just, because they have all told. on taxes, and the county just, because they have all told me, and I got all their ordinances and all their paperwork and everything, that that is exactly how the state has it set up, is so that they can take them and return them back to the tax roll. I mean, I'm not, to me, you know, last year at your guys' tax auction, the St. John Land Bank spent $6,700 on three properties that we tore down. We have that expense. I mean, we're trying to clean the town up and pump money back into the community and the county. And so, I mean, I think, but I need to know going forward what we need to do.
I think what Todd was saying is, I mean, you probably agree with that, but we hope that in the future, just go ahead and buy it at the tax sale.
Well, the problem is, are you gonna have one every year?
Yes, I think we are.
That's plain. And, you know, I'm not saying people can't donate or shouldn't donate, but before you accept the donation, I think you need to say, you need to pay the taxes off.
But if they're not gonna pay the taxes-
If they're not gonna pay the taxes.
That's why they're donating.
If they're not gonna pay the taxes.
And I guess where I see it differently is, is if they come to the land bank, at least we have control over where that property goes, and what happens to it. Whereas, if it goes to tax auction and say, "We don't want to spend $4,000 on a piece of property,"
But if someone does show up and say, "I am willing to pay $4,000," and that's $4,000 that goes to the-
We don't know that that person's not gonna do a good job as a human.
Well, correct, but I can tell you, the $6,700 we spent last year, those three properties that we bought, would still be set the same way they are when we bought them.
I don't doubt that.
I'd say, next time, if you guys are going to get a property donated to you, you gotta check through the property taxes, and then before you accept it, come to the commissioners and see, because I think this should be a case-by-case scenario.
Is that how other cities do it, or is it just automatically abated?
Automatically abated.
I talked to Joe Soltan at Reno County, and he, no, that's not the case there.
The lady I talked to yesterday, I said that Reno County helped and set up with the city of, city of Hudge, and that's how they decided it would, it had worked. Now, she hasn't worked there the whole entire time.
Because I talked to Joe Soltan, who's the county councillor in Reno County, and that's, I mean, I did the research, and then I went to talk to Joe and said, "Hey, just checking with you, because-"
Do you have a piece of paper that addresses property owners?
Uh, who's it? It was a lady I talked to, like, she said she used to be the appraiser.
He can use that.
Sue, I'll hear it.
Sue, um-
Reagan.
Reagan, yeah, here you go.
She still work over there?
Property addresses, nine seventeen.
I talked to, she does land bank stuff over in Reno County, and she was super nice about it. And she said, "It's a slippery slope," I'm not sure I'm gonna do that now. I'm like, okay.
She's pretty chockling.
Yeah. She's striking me as very chockling.
I think we should pay the taxes on this deal, on this property, part. I'm getting ready to.
Kent, is there any way we, is there any way we could include that it's a one-time deal?
Well, we don't even say it's a one-time deal, because, I mean, unless we say something that we're going to start doing it, every time it'll be one-time deal.
Maybe you'll include that it's on a case-by-case basis, so.
You have the address, or the-
What do you call it, abate the taxes?
Forgive the property taxes.
I'll make, I make a motion that we forgive the property taxes on the property that the land bank has bought, or St. John Land Bank has bought, or donated on nine seventeen Northwest Street.
In St. John.
In St. John. In the future, it'll be a case-by-case deal.
A second? You got that, Mia?
Okay.
Okay, on the favor of the motion that Todd stated, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. As long as neither has a verdict, so.
I have a question on that. So, do I just go by this letter I get from the city that says that they have accepted properties in their land bank?
Say that again, Ray.
Jamie just gave me these letters that said-
Well, the deeds have all been filed, but Jamie sent a letter.
Just to let me know what properties are in their land bank.
Right.
Yeah, so do I just take this? Of course, you're gonna have a meeting, if it's gonna be case-by-case, correct?
Right.
Yeah. So, what about the one property that owes a second half of nineteen taxes?
In the land bank?
It's in, they donated it to the land bank, bought it last year at the tax sale, and donated it to the land bank.
I'll just take care of it.
Well, he said he would pay them.
We'll just take care of it. It's ninety dollars, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, he said he'd pay them.
I think the property that we just did was basically, did he buy that, no, he just bought it from an individual, didn't he?
He bought it at the tax auction, paid gambling, started to tear it down, and then donated it to the land bank.
But he held it for a couple of years.
A year.
Because if he bought it at the tax sale, there shouldn't be any property taxes on it.
He would have to pay him when he bought it.
No.
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 He bought it for forty dollars in two thousand and eighteen.
No, I'm talking about the one on nine seventeen.
Oh, no.
That was never bought.
No, it's not in the tax, it was on the list.
It's on the list, and he owned it at tax sale.
But, okay. The other property was bought at last year's tax sale.
Yeah, yeah.
And then he paid, which he would have this year's taxes owed on it.
Last year.
But the owner of nine seventeen that donated that property to the land bank, he bought that property and tore the house down on it.
No.
He just bought the property. He didn't buy it. Darlene Steinmates owned it, Bob Steinmates, and Trey Turner tore the house down, hauled it off, cleaned the lot up, and then she donated the whole entire property to the land bank.
Okay. Okay. Looks good, too.
And I would say, in three months, you guys will be collecting revenue off of that property.
Yeah.
Because there's a house gonna be put in there.
I thought that he had bought it, cleaned it up, and then was gonna donate it. When people are doing that, they need to realize they need to equip it where, because the property taxes still-
Well, those property taxes were already delinquent for three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
He did a super nice job cleaning that up.
And I do think it's a really good deal, cleaning the town up. The people that has donated their time and equipment and stuff.
And I think, for one, we've got some interest on the house, the properties on West Second that we bought, if someone wanted to build another house down there. So, I mean, that's our biggest goal, is to, I hate buying properties, I'd rather have them donated, whether they got taxes in off, because it saves us money, and when it does cost us to tear them down, it makes the land bank money go a lot further.
I think there's people that would be willing to buy them through the tax sale, give them to you, too.
Right. And we've had a few that have done that.
I think there'll be more of it if you live.
But, I mean, it's kind of hard for an individual to go out and spend $7,000 on three properties and turn around and donate it.
There are some people willing to clean it up, but not as they would be, but, I'm just talking.
I guess if we have another issue, we'll bring it back before we do anything.
There is pretty good movement, and I think it's great to get it cleaned up.
That'll work, and I'll get a few more to take care of that other property.
Oh, what'd he say, he was paying?
Anything else?
Sure.
Any other comments over there?
We may have that at each end.
If not, we'll adjourn.